Thank you Reverend Winn. Next item is the Pledge of Allegiance. I'd ask Mr. Benson, please, to lead the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Benson. Will the city clerk, please, call the roll?
Chairman Rasio.
Chair, here.
Bruce Galloway.
Here.
Russ Winn.
Here.
Gary Gambrell.
Here.
Dan Hirschenson.
Here.
Gerald Benson.
Here.
Linda Waterhouse.
Present.
Next item is the approval of the minutes. I wasn't here at the last meeting, so I will recuse myself from the minutes, but I would ask someone to move the approval of the minutes of the meeting on November 16th.
So move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Minutes are approved, and Mr. Hirschenson as the vice chairman and chairman of the meeting will sign the minutes in my stead. As is our want, public comments will be held after the public hearings. First item on the agenda is the Sports Challenge Commercial Plan Development, a request to amend the schedule of uses in Benita Springs zoning ordinance 19-02 to create a Phase 1A approximately four acres plus or minus in size, to include an indoor/outdoor sports complex with consumption on premises, and to add three deviations.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a quasi judicial hearing, so I'll ask now, actually, I'll ask now for both hearings. If you are here to speak on this item, or you may feel the urge, you just came to watch, but at some point you can't help yourself, you'd like to come up and speak in public comment, I'd ask you to swear in at this time. Please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm, tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth? Okay. All right, I'm watching those few in the back who didn't swear. You won't be able to speak at all. Sorry. Try it, Mike.
Good morning, everyone. Mike Fegan with Community Development for the record. We're going to let the applicant go first. I'm just going to give you a quick overview. This is an amendment to an existing approval. The zoning ordinance was approved back in 2019, and the request at that time was to rezone approximately 99 acres to a commercial plan development with the intent to develop the property in two phases. Phase 1 ultimately became the site of the card room location, while the remainder of the property was designated as Phase 2. There were no specific permanent uses tied to Phase 2. It was a remaining swath of about 88 acres, so they wanted to sort of take their time to figure out how they want to go ahead and develop a chunk of property that large. This opportunity came up to convert four acres of that remaining 88 acres to a new phase and to create what we call Phase 1A. So this would be Phase 1, Phase 1A, and Phase 2. So that's essentially the amendment in a nutshell. Staff and the applicant are in agreement with the staff report and with the conditions of approval. So with that, I will let the applicant and their agent go first with the presentation.
Thank you.
Good morning. For the record, my name is Paula McMichael, Vice President of Planning Services with Holmontez, here on behalf of the applicant, the Benita Fort Myers Corp., and their project, Sports Challenge America. So I have here with me today, on behalf of Sports Challenge America, Isadora Havanek, Scott Savin, myself, George Powell, the attorney for the applicant, Tom Jones, who is the architect of record, Rick Berlansky, the project engineer, and Ted Trish, who performed the traffic analysis. So as Mike already introduced, this was rezoned to a commercial plan development back in 2019. This is the site of the old Greyhound racing track. I think everyone knows where this property is located. Back in 2019, we rezoned the entire 98-acre parcel to a commercial plan development and included two phases. One was the card room and restaurant that's located at the corner of Racetrack Road and Benita Beach Road, and the rest of the property remained as Phase 2. There are some uses associated with Phase 2. There's the apartment complex. There are some temporary uses that are allowed as part of Phase 2. And this request would create an approximately four-acre Phase 1A to develop Sports Challenge America. And now I'm going to ask Scott Savin to come up, and he's going to give you an overview of what that concept is for Sports Challenge.
Good morning, members of the zoning board. My name is Scott Savin. I'm the chief operating officer of Southwest Florida Enterprises. We operate the Benita Springs Poker Room and are now speaking to you about Sports Challenge America. I'm also here with one of the owners, Izzy Havanek. So Sports Challenge America is a great opportunity for us to do something that's a franchisable business entity that we would like to build the first one in the country, here in Benita Springs, next to the poker room. The four acres are due west of the poker room. We've leveled the old dog track and built the new Benita Springs Poker Room. We've been open for just over a year, to very good reviews locally and also around the state of Florida, where the poker room has pretty much become a model for what people are looking to do in downsizing from larger paramutual facilities now that dog racing and high lie are decoupled in the state of Florida. Sports Challenge America, for us, is a great opportunity because it's four acres of land and approximate 10,000 square foot indoor facility. Inside, there'll be six bowling lanes and five virtual reality rooms. And then outside, there is a single par-three golf hole, an NBA-sized regulation basketball court, a football field, which will be 100 yards in length, but half the width of a normal football field, and then a baseball diamond, which basically is, if you took away left and right field, it's basically home plate, second base, and center field. It can be rented out for events and parties, but the primary operation of Sports Challenge America is a bet-on-yourself or a wager-on-yourself skills competition, where you can go and you can try and make a hole-in-one on the par-three golf hole, you can try and bowl three strikes in a row on the bowling lanes, you can compete for score on any major golf course in America in our virtual reality rooms, which will also feature other sports like shooting and archery and car racing. Outdoors, on the basketball court, we will have specific sports challenges where you're trying to make a foul shot or a three-point shot or a half-court shot. On the football field, you'll be throwing and kicking for accuracy. And on the baseball diamond, again, throwing for accuracy, throwing for distance, pitching for speed. Everything that's involved there, the concept is where you are paying a fixed amount to try and accomplish a specific sports task.
One question?
Yes, sir.
Are you contemplating hitting a baseball? You did not mention that.
There is no hitting of the...
No hitting. Thank you very much.
All throwing of the baseball. There is throwing of football, kicking of football. We'll have goalposts like on a regulation.
Understood. Thanks very much.
Sure. So, for example, you will try and make a half-court basketball shot, where you will pay a fixed fee, $10, and if you make the shot, you'll win $500. So everything is a bet-on-yourself concept. Sports wagering, where you're betting on other teams, is not legal in the state of Florida right now, but what is legal in the state of Florida is where you can essentially wager on your ability to complete a skill challenge. We will have tournaments, and we will also have the individual days when you can come out and try and do one or all of the events that we're going to offer. We primarily operate nights and weekends, so we're off-peak traffic hours. This is something where people will generally come, several people, to a vehicle, and we're very excited about this. The poker room is doing really well. We're excited about the idea of amalgamating a lot of different sports activities in one location. It hasn't been done anywhere in the country. You have your top golfs and other things that are out there where people can go and play golf. You have bowling alleys where they can go and bowl, but you don't have a single sports facility anywhere in the country where basketball, football, baseball, bowling, you know, the par-three challenge, and then the indoor activities in the VR rooms are all amassed in one space. Again, it's four acres, essentially next to the existing poker room due west, and we're just happy that we have the opportunity, well, the hopeful opportunity, to build this first one here in Benita Springs. If there are any questions, certainly happy to answer them.
Just one more.
Yes.
Would the facility be open to someone to use it without any of these challenges?
Yes, so what we'll do is we're going to set it up where there's specific times when people can come for the challenges, which will typically be after 5:00 PM in the afternoon and on weekends. We'll have time set aside when, say, there's a bowling league that wanted to come and just bowl, you know, reserve the whole place and use it for bowling. Yes, if people wanted to rent it out for a party in the off-challenge hours, they could do that. And if an individual wanted to come and, I guess, practice his par-three golf swing and stay there for half an hour.
Take their children to roam around or something like that. That would be available?
Yes, it'll be structured, so we won't have people just out there without supervision, but we will have hours when people can come and practice or compete just to enhance their own abilities.
Thank you.
So you don't envision, like, exhibition games on the full-court basketball court or like an arena football contest with spectators?
No, we don't. I mean, primarily, we understand that we will set aside time where if a group of, you know, 15 or 20 people wanted to rent the basketball court, or if someone, a company, wanted to rent it out for a corporate event and have it all available to them so they could do all the activities, yes, but primarily, we're there for the sports challenges and for the tournaments.
Thank you.
I have a question concerning, what is your anticipation for traffic flow? And I know it's in the report, but in reality, based upon other models, somehow you must come up with some sort of a number as to what you anticipate to be the traffic flow number of attendees at any one given time on a particular day.
Well, I'm not the traffic expert. The traffic expert...
Okay.
Probably talked to that, or one of the people here could talk to that. But because of our hour structure, we're primarily operating after 5:00 PM on weekdays and on weekends, so we're on off-peak traffic times. Again, the facility isn't something where 500 or 1,000 people would be there at a time. You know, you only have six bowling lanes. You only have five VR rooms. When you're doing the individual challenges, it's essentially one person competing at a time. So we don't look for there to be more than 50 to 100 people at the facility at any one time in particular. And when we're conducting tournaments or the challenges, we think we'll arrange it so there's an even flow of traffic, sort of in and out of the facility. It's not that people will have to play and then wait around for something. So should be people coming and going and operating on the off-peak times.
Just one obvious question. I don't think it's been addressed. Lighting?
There's lighting, and again, I'll leave that to one of the people behind me here who can speak better.
There is current lighting.
Well, there is current parking lighting, but there will be lighting added so we can have these activities at night.
Okay, that's another issue for later.
The orientation of the par-three?
Yes.
It's one shot, no putting, just one shot, nobody's walking?
In the tournaments and in the sports challenge, it's a single shot where you're just trying to make the hole-in-one. If someone wanted to, again, come out and practice during the off-tournament hours and off-challenge hours, and they wanted to play the par-three 10 times in a row and actually play it out, they could hit their initial shot and then go to the green and putt out if they wanted to.
What happens if 40 feet, a 40-foot-high net doesn't work?
Well, it's a par-three, so we're not letting anybody use a driver, you know, or a wood to tee off on 130-yard par-three. We're going to be very...
130 yards?
Yes.
I'm a lousy golfer, and I can hit a nine iron much higher than 40 feet.
But probably not carry it 130 yards and still have it be at a 40-foot height.
It's a pretty prodigious nine iron, unless you're a problem.
Yeah, so we're going to definitely make sure that people know that this is not a driving range, and on top of which, if you're paying $10 for a swing, you're probably going to try and make that hole-in-one and basically not try and do something you shouldn't be doing. But that's why everything will be attended.
Anything else? One, Mr. Savin?
Very good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Again, Paula McMichael for the record. So I'm just going to go through the site plan and some of the traffic information that you had asked about. So the request specifically is to create a Phase 1A, four acres in size, to include an indoor/outdoor sports challenge complex with consumption on premises and to add three deviations to the plan development. So this is, in the red and yellow, this is the entirety of the commercial plan development. The yellow right here at the corner of Racetrack and Benita Beach Road is the poker room that has been constructed along with the restaurant. And this would be, the hatching on it is Phase 1A, is the four acres that we're talking about today. This was just to give you an idea of some of the distances from adjacent residential, so it's over 2,000 feet from Montero, 1,300 feet from Pine Haven, and almost 2,000 feet from Meditera. This is the master concept plan for Phase 1 and Phase 1A. So again, Phase 1 has been constructed, so the poker room and restaurant is there. These access points onto Racetrack Road are there in existence right now, and this parking field is there. So we are using the existing access points onto Racetrack Road, and then this is Phase 1A to the west of the poker room. So we're only adding a little bit of parking. We're using the parking that's already in existence.
Where's the parking that's being added?
Okay, so, in this graphic, north is now to the left, so we turned it so you can see it a little bit better. So the only parking that's being added is this row and then this handicap spaces adjacent to the building.
Thank you.
Has any thought been given to reorienting the golf hole, to put it where the football field is, to avoid possibly golf balls flying onto Benita Beach Road? Is that doable?
The way...
Does that allay your fears a little bit?
The way this is set up...
Please flip it.
Yeah, because then what would happen is any overshot would go into the parking lot or something, damage a car maybe, but wouldn't necessarily cause an accident. Any thought been given to that?
We have looked at that. The reason it's set up the way it is, so again, we're taking advantage of these existing access points. This road on the southern end or this access will eventually go through to the additional properties...
You're going to put it all the way through?
To the west.
Okay.
So when we take a look at this building, you'll see there's a portcacher down here. The bar is on this side, so the way that it's been set up is really...
I see. Okay, yeah.
To take advantage of what's already existing there and that pass-through that's going to come through.
And what is that piece of property to the, as I sit here, to the left? Oh, that's the mock baseball field. Okay, now I see it. Okay.
So again, this is the building, so it's about a 10,000-square-foot building, one-story building, that has the bowling lanes and the VR rooms that Scott had talked about. This is the three-par golf challenge. There's the basketball court, the football field, and then this is the baseball field. And again, these are not as wide as a full football field or baseball field. These are more narrow than that.
So the only reason that the golf, the par-three, is oriented toward Benita Beach Road is because of the existing paved asphalt in the parking lot?
No, there's several reasons, but the primary reason is if you look at the building, anyone who comes to the facility will have to be processed through the building. If you leave the building after buying a ticket or purchasing an admission to compete in the sports challenge or to play in a tournament, by having the tee adjacent to the building, a person walks out and they take their single shot. We don't want all those people walking all the way down to the other end and then turning around and hitting the golf ball back. So it's important to us that everyone circulates out of the building and can go to the football, to the baseball, to the basketball, or to the tee area. We wouldn't want them walking all the way down to Benita Beach Road and then turning around and hitting the ball, the single shot, and then walking all the way back.
You can't flip the building, too?
No, building can't be flipped.
Why not?
Basically, we need the building where it is for the parking and the circulation, and I don't know, Rick or Tom or someone, our engineer architects can address that if you'd like.
Hi, Thomas Jones with JMDG Architecture for the record. I'm the project architect. So we've studied how to site this building in various different ways, and we feel today that the approach we have on paper is the best solution for all the variables that we had to consider. As Paula mentioned, the site plan... Let me get back. Which way? The building wanted to look at the existing curb cuts from Racetrack Road and get a direct path to the project. Where's the other site plan oriented the other way? There we go. So in keeping with some of the future development and in keeping with the zoning overlays that have been contemplated and embraced by the city, the parking lot access or the drive to the south of the building here is the most optimal way to orient this building. It allows us to set up a pass-through here or a connecting road that brings internal circulation to whatever future development might occur. We did look at various options for how to orient the courts and the fields. The golf challenge being the longest gave, presented some challenges to us with how you site that south of where it currently exists. And in that sense, we studied the golf challenge significantly to understand and be comfortable that golf balls flying off a club would not be reaching an elevation or be traversing side to side higher than the nets that would be provided, just based on the challenge and the distance. So with the access road coming through, this would be the southernmost curb cut off of Racetrack. We, again, felt like, from a business standpoint, that somebody coming to that facility specifically would have a very clear path of travel without negotiating and driving through the parking lot of the card room. So in that sense, as Scott just mentioned, that would define a very clear entrance sequence with a cover drop-off and allow patrons to understand that this was the sort of check-in reception point located here, and then the patron would come through the building and then access several tees over here for that challenge. So the rest of it kind of stacked very efficiently on the site. The other consideration with the fields is that in any outdoor court or field design, they have to be oriented with, in north-south. So in that sense, when you look at the geometries of the football and the baseball, they do stack very efficiently, and that opportunity did not really exist here to create that. Again, with this access road kind of being a governing fixture in terms of the site planning, they wanted to be south of the building for that reason. We also had some existing conditions here as far as trees and water management that was creating, you know, a little bit more of a constraint here, and for that reason, it made sense to have the golf course in this setting, or the hole rather, in that setting developed in this area. And as we did that, you can see the pockets of residual space. This is indeed a full-size NBA basketball court. It was able to be located in this pocket here. And at that point, a patron can come out, as Scott was mentioning, and access these other challenges while supervised. So we feel, so again, in conclusion, we feel that flipping the building to the south of this access point, which again is a fixed access drive, would have caused some challenges with the geometry of the development and not efficiently allowed us to locate all the fields and courts in a compact arrangement. And you can imagine that as they facilitate the activities with the patron while supervised, that they don't want people walking very far out of eyesight for security control, whether they're supervised by personnel or staff, or whether there are cameras. It all needed to be very closely monitored, so...
The, I understand what you're saying. I personally feel there's more than one way to skin a cat, but let me quote from the plan development analysis, the formal findings. While the overall design of the site and building does not incorporate the recommendations by Tool Design Group and DPZ Co-Design, why didn't you use the recommendations of the two design studies that were done for Benita Beach Road and this site?
Well, we feel like we have incorporated the spirit of those studies with this solution. It's very challenging. We had a very similar challenge with the poker room building. The poker room building incorporated a mixture of security concerns and restaurant with a betting facility that created back-of-house needs that wanted to be located in places that were less than desirable. So in that forum-based code, pushing a building to Benita Beach Road and hiding the parking beyond, behind, created challenges with how you identify formal access for the public, how you service back-of-house. So in the poker room building, we felt, even though it wasn't ideally based on the consultant's recommendations and forward-thinking zoning, that it accommodated the best of both worlds in a sense that we did create, in the spirit of the zoning code, a building at the road. We did address the city. We did define the corner. We did provide formal entrances. We did hide the parking, and we adequately shielded the back-of-house functions in keeping with the security needs of the operator who is having to have controlled access for their patrons and other activities or their staff in the back. So having said that, this facility has a very similar challenge in that when you add some of the simulator rooms and a bowling alley, these are spaces very much like the poker space and the simulcast room in the existing card room building, in that they don't want to have and don't require fenestration. The facades are blank and less endearing. So for that reason, when you look at the infrastructure that's been set up with the access through the southern side of the parking lot, and the building at that node makes sense there, and the presentation to the patron with the main entrance of the building facing south makes sense, very much like the card room, you have the challenge that the back-of-house or the rear of some of these blank areas are, you know, the least endearing parts of the building. Well, the good news is that the building is set off Benita Beach Road property line 362 feet, so it's significantly further back. We feel like that that's not going to create a problem as far as how the building presents itself to the patron or the city. In addition, to locate the building any further north and stack everything to the south would necessitate patrons to access an area of the parking lot that either, A, is currently reserved for the back-of-house vehicular access and the employee access for the card room, but also would have to traverse and navigate through what is going to be some water management areas. And that area is today pretty much established, and we're just improving it that way. So we did not want to bring people north, to the north end of the site, where we felt like there was a security reason. The building with its blank facades and its rooms would not present very well as a building residing on Benita Beach Road. So we've studied this different ways, and our conclusion internally between the owner, the civil engineer, and myself was that this is the most ideal solution to accomplish the goals and ideals of the zoning code, albeit not in a perfect way necessarily, but we did contemplate the idea that where the roundabout is at the entrance here, that you could continue this access to the adjacent parcel. That is in keeping with the zoning code for future development, which embraces internal access for this kind of mixed development and density.
When you say back-of-room, you mean where they keep the money? Or back-of-house?
We're talking about the security offices, the administration staff, all of the security protocol spaces that are required to operate the building, and yes, the exchange of money in the back that is done in a secured area. So it's very sensitive, very secure, very controlled, and very much implemented in a way that not only accomplishes the security concerns of the user, but keeps it out of sight and controlled in a way where... it out of sight and, and controlled in a way where security is optimized.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. So a couple of things that I just wanted to mention, since you brought up the Tool Design Study. Again, the poker room was brought close to that corner as, as part of the consistency with that study to bring activity to the intersection in that corner. But again, we're working with these existing access roads through the site and security is very important to the operation of this facility. So again, this whole area is going to be fenced and again, we're trying to control people moving through the site. There will be netting around the golf target challenge. So it's 10 feet towards the south end, goes up to 40 feet, and then it's 20 feet along Benita Beach Road. We have 12-foot fencing around the, this end of the baseball field and fencing around the football field as well. And we'll look at that in more detail a little bit later in the presentation. So these are the architectural elevations of that building. So this is the south elevation. So this side of the building here with the port crochet. And if you're familiar with the poker room, you can see the architecture is very consistent and compatible with the, the building that's already on the property. That's the east elevation. On the right side of the screen, you can see the outdoor bar. There will be a bar, no restaurant, but a bar, an outdoor bar on the building. And that's another view of the outdoor bar. Again, it's sort of a tiki hut sort of feel to it. We have provided an enhanced landscape buffer along Benita Beach Road that will match what has been installed on the north side of the poker room. So this is what that looks like at installation and then within three years. And this is just another view of that landscape buffer so you can see what has been added. So we are adding the palm trees, the royal palms, and there's an additional hedge row above what is required by code. So there was one deviation previously approved. I'm not, I'm not going to review it. It was related to the sign at the corner. And we are adding three deviations. So deviation two and three are related to the fencing. And staff has recommended approval of all the deviations. So what we're coming up against in the code, this is a commercial plan development, but we're talking about sports facilities. We're talking about sports fields and the fencing for sports fields. So there's a little bit of disconnect between what's, would be normally permitted in a commercial plan development versus what we need to accommodate these sports fields. So the first one, in commercial plan developments, you are not typically allowed to have cyclone fencing, chain link fencing. But we are proposing that on, along the end of the baseball field. So that cyclone fencing is typical for a baseball field. It's easy to maintain. It's durable. It's limited on the location of the site. Again, the entire site is fenced. We've talked about the enhanced landscaping that would be provided. Staff provided a condition that they wanted the cyclone fence either green or black, and we have agreed to that condition. And this just shows you where that is located on the property. So that's the blue line here. That's the, the cyclone fencing. Deviation three is related to the height of the fencing. Again, in a typical commercial plan development, you can't go above six feet. But as we've talked about, around the golf green, we have a maximum height of 40 feet. The football field, 20 feet, and the baseball field would be 12-foot. So again, that's very typical for an athletic facility. It's needed for safety and protection. So again, we're showing where those locations are in blue. So again, the golf netting starts at 10 feet, goes up to 40 feet, and then is at 20 feet at Benita Beach Road. And then we have around the ends of the football field and the cyclone fencing around the end of the baseball.
What is, what's the width of the end of the par three as it, as it comes up to Benita Beach Road? How many feet? How wide is it at the green?
At its widest point, I believe it's about 90 feet. So it might be a little bit more narrow at that end. Deviation four is related to parking. As you've, you've heard already, sports challenge is a new concept. There are no, there's nothing like this anywhere in the country that we're aware of. So as far as parking requirements, there's nothing straightforward in your land development code that would say for this type of use, this is how many parking spaces you needed. So we have...
The only question I have is, excuse me, maybe it's not for you, maybe it's for the staff, but what, what is the minimum number required of parking spaces? You, you talk about 15% or 20% more than X. What is X?
15% is what?
Huh?
15% is, is what?
15% of, but what is X? I mean, you've got to have a basis on which to calculate the number. That, that's the only thing I know. I ask.
So...
That's total.
So phase one, which is the poker room and the restaurant and the bar, required 253 parking spaces.
253.
So the phase one A that we're talking about, based on your...
It'll be about 30, 30 more?
Requires 120 spaces. So in total, that's 373 parking spaces, and we are providing 445.
That's the only question because it's a little vague, but okay.
Let me follow up the chairman's question. Instead of, we don't know what the parking demand is going to be.
Right.
So why are we starting at 20% more than the minimum required and building those spaces? And then the, the report says that if the parking demand doesn't justify those extra spaces, we'll tear them up. Now, I've never seen the parking space torn up after it goes in. Why don't you go with the minimum required and then see what the demand is? If you need more, you can add them. Rather than adding something that may or may, more, more hard surface in Benita Springs, instead of going with the minimum and adding it if the, the traffic justifies it?
So again, with the phase one A, we're making use of the existing parking. So this, this is all existing parking right now and all that we're adding some, one row of additional parking here and some handicap spaces adjacent to the building. So we are already using the parking that's existing. So we're not constructing 70 additional spaces for this site. And this is only 13 acres out of 98 acres. So we have over 80 acres that will be developed in the future. And as those phases are developed, we'll be able to utilize this parking.
Why do you need the deviation then?
That was a request from staff that we are providing too much parking, so we needed to request a deviation. There's a language in your overlay that you cannot provide more than 15% over parking.
But you, you make a statement that the full-size sports facilities require more or less parking spaces than those established in the LDC. Is it more or is it less?
So what we are saying is we are using the standard in the code, which is for a baseball field, which would have spectators, which would have people coming to see a game.
Right.
That's not, as you've heard, that's not what's proposed here. There won't be spectators. There will be maybe more people.
And you've also, you've also estimated some occupancy figures, and you stand by those. And, and based on that, you've determined the number of parking spaces that you may need. Is that a fair assumption?
Yes.
I just want to pick up on the, kind of the same, kind of gist of the conversation. I'm kind of curious with respect to the parking as it relates to impervious surfaces within the area of stormwater management. From the standpoint of the entire complex, I would assume that that does comply with the city ordinances concerning X percentage has to be devoted to open, not necessarily open space, but where there is pervious soil so that there could be percolation versus more parking lot. I just want to make sure that that standard, whatever it happens to be, which slips my mind right now, overall percentage, has that been complied with?
Yes, we have looked at the water management and provided what's required, yes.
Thank you.
Which, which staff person would address that?
Mike.
Again.
Yes, so the, the thing to keep in mind is that when this site was rezoned back in 2019, it was rezoned as an entire 99-plus acre site. So a lot of your calculations are done based on all of that acreage. And then you come in and you develop a chunk at a time. And you know, you sort of, you know, e, each chunk is responsible for its part of the overall equation. So this is just a very, I guess, you know, you're talking four acres out of a remaining 88-acre swath. And you know, they, they are meeting their required open space calculations. They are meeting their required stormwater calculations. With the parking, you know, like, like we said, one of the things to keep in mind with that is there was a lot of going back and forth between staff and the applicant's traffic engineer on an appropriate methodology to utilize to calculate parking and trip generation. And there really wasn't an agreement, mainly because the manual doesn't account for a use like this. This is a very unique set of uses and a very unique style and design, as you heard, that isn't anywhere else in the state of Florida. So one of the things that we're proposing to sort of help navigate that is, and you'll see in the report, is we have a monitoring condition in place to help provide some good hard data to make an overall assessment for how to handle these types of things going forward, but also to get a clear understanding of, you know, did they provide enough? Did they provide too much? Is it not enough? And, and so that's, that's essentially where that's, where that's coming from. One of the things that we do have in place with the Benita Beach Road overlay, I know that had come up as well, as far as their intent to meet the requirements of the overlay. Another big portion of the overlay is providing interconnectivity. And if you look at the maps that are in the code for some of the designs of the, of the Benita Beach Road overlay, you see what's popularly referred to as a grid network in terms of how you do your interconnections and your cross-traveling and your, and your, and handle your traffic, pedestrian facilities, bike facilities, and the like. They are meeting that intent and, and that, that is a premium in the overlay because that is something that is severely lacking with what's there now. So there, there was a premium placed on that and they are able to meet the intent of that. One of the things that we also required of them and back in 2019 was that when they were to come in for phase two, which was the remaining 88 acres at the time, that they needed to provide a right-of-way reservation that ran east-west, that connected Old 41 to Racetrack Road, to provide an alternate route of travel instead of going Benita Beach Road necessarily. We felt that because we had so many unknowns with regards to traffic with this particular case, that phase two was no longer an appropriate time for that reservation. It needed to be done now so that it could be studied now. And they did agree to that condition as well.
Mr. Chairman, I may just, because, because both the applicant and staff have fairly detailed presentations, and obviously this is for the, for the board to consider, perhaps we should hold questions till the end so that some of those, some of the answers may come in the form of presentations and we don't have... I know when I do a presentation, I'm going to go over it again and again, even if I've already answered that question, just make, make the meeting go smoother and make it more coherent for you to be able to follow.
Okay, as long as the, the deviations and, and the justification for them are fully addressed, then, then I would agree with you, Mr. Rooney.
Mr. Chairman, I've got a problem remembering my question an hour from now.
Well, that's, that's true. Maybe we can just jot it down, but you know, let's try to narrow the issues as, as well as we can and, and address the, the points that could be at issue. That be okay, ma'am? Please.
Sure.
Yeah, no problem. Okay. And just to clarify, as far as parking, we believe we're providing the correct number of spaces, but your code says that we are over-parking the site. We do believe we need adequate parking on, on the property and that that's a benefit to the city that we provide adequate parking on our site. And that it enhances the plan development by ensuring that we have adequate parking So trip generation, again, as you've already heard, let me go back here. So there is a staff condition, which you've already noted, that if, based on those traffic counts, based on the use of the parking lot, if we find that in fact we do have too much parking, that we have estimated incorrectly, that we would take some of that parking out. So there is a condition which the applicant has agreed to. So trip generation, again, this is a very unique use. There isn't anything like it anywhere else that we know of. So in estimating trip generation, we've looked at the, the bar as a use, the bowling, the VR stations, and the outdoor sports areas, made assumptions, as you can see there, assumed to accommodate 70 patrons with an average occupancy of 2.5, resulting in a total PM peak hour trip of 68 trips. And just to note, the track facility, when it was open before this was rezoned back in 2019, generated about 489 PM peak hour trips. The card room estimates about 206 PM peak hour trips. So even with the addition of this phase one A, we have about 45% fewer trips than were being generated by the site when it was open as a track facility. I'm just going to review a couple of the staff conditions. I'm not going to read this to you. We have agreed, as Mike already mentioned, to reserve a right-of-way through the site to provide an alternative route from Old 41 to Benita Beach Road. I just want to emphasize that the CPD amendment before you considers only four acres out of the additional 88 acres that are part of this plan development, leaving 84 acres, 85% of the property without ultimate plans for development. So while the applicant has agreed and provided a conceptual location for that connection through the site, I want to emphasize that it is conceptual and preliminary only. At this point, it's premature to commit to an exact configuration. We're not sure what will happen with the other 84 acres of the site. The other staff condition, and again, I'm not going to read this to you, but we will install permanent and continuous traffic count monitors. So we will be looking at the traffic that's coming into the site. Again, this is a very unique use. We estimated, staff estimated, we're going to get the actual data to find out what the traffic counts are for this. And with that, regarding the findings for this amendment, the request is consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the Benita Plan, the LDC, and applicable codes and regulations. We will meet or exceed all performance and location standards. We are consistent with the general commercial future land use designation of the site. We are compatible with existing and planned uses in the area. We have access to adequate transportation facilities and will not unduly burden the transportation network. We are not adversely affecting critical, environmentally critical or sensitive areas. The proposed mix of uses is appropriate at the subject location, and we have provided conditions sufficient to safeguard the public interest. And public facilities are available and adequate to serve the proposed land use. So it is my professional planning opinion that the proposed rezoning has met all of the applicable standards, is consistent with the City of Benita Springs Land Development Code, public hearing considerations, and generally accepted planning principles. It is compatible with adjacent uses and has provided the necessary record that entitles it to approval. And we do agree with the conclusions of the staff report. And with that, I will take... Any other questions or if you have any questions for any other members of our team?
Any questions? Shall we hear from the staff? Or shall we just accept their findings, just read it into the record? Want to do that? The figure on? Does the board wish to hear? Does the board wish to hear from the staff?
Yes, I think that's important.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, good morning again. Mike Fegan with Community Development for the Record. A lot of the information that you're going to hear is going to be a little bit repetitive from what Paula just said when I came up before to address certain things. So I apologize for repeating myself. As always, the staff review team that reviewed this went through its normal paces with all of the disciplines. If you do have issues with the staff report, it was John Dolmer who did the entire review. So you can... So again, it's an amendment to an existing zoning ordinance that was approved back in 2019. The standard of review and the findings are on page 11 of 315 in your packet. And, you know, also keep in mind that, you know, the process going forward is part of the staff recommendation. You get public comment, you make your recommendation. We take it to City Council for the final hearing and the final vote. So as Paula showed you before, the aerial of the site, which I think we're all familiar with, and we really are talking about that little four-acre sliver right there of the remaining CPD area. And this is the surrounding zoning map. We didn't see any conflicts with the surrounding zoning. It's within existing CPD that's already been approved. The uses being proposed are commercial in nature, so we didn't see any conflicts from that standpoint. With the background, again, in August of 2019, ordinance 1902 was approved. It rezoned 99 acres to a commercial plan development with the intent to develop in two phases. Phase One ultimately became the card room. Phase Two is still somewhat undetermined. There was a list of temporary uses that were permitted for a period of 10 years as part of Phase Two. And this request is to convert four acres of the remaining 88 acres to a Phase 1A for this sports challenge facility. There's also proposed to be an outdoor bar and seating area with consumption on premises and to add three deviations to the overall plan development. As far as the parameters of the site, as Paula had outlined, you know, you're going to have an indoor building approximately 10,000 square feet in size with, that should say, with bowling lanes and virtual reality simulators. There's also going to be an outdoor seating component with consumption on premises that's tied to the building. And for the outdoor component, you have the court facilities that were described by the applicant's presentation, the basketball court, a reduced with football field, reduced baseball field, and the par-three single-hole golf course. And with the hours of operation, it is important to note, and it's important to note this from a traffic standpoint as well, as far as making sure we're getting accurate data, is that the proposed facility isn't intended to be open seven days a week. And that's for the indoor component and the outdoor component as well. So we do have the hours of operation that are tied to the amendment here. Yes, sir?
Mike, were those hours of operations requested by the staff or proposed by the applicant?
In one of our reviews, going back and forth, what we do is we ask for, it's a request for additional information. And one of the things that we asked them was the proposed hours of operation. This was what was proposed.
And they proposed?
They proposed.
Okay, thank you.
So with the schedule of uses, the original request was for an indoor/outdoor recreational facility with the consumption on premises component to it. But the staff opinion was that, based on the way that the facility is designed and intended to operate, and when you look at the proposed definitions of, or I'm sorry, not the proposed, when you look at the LDC definitions of recreational facilities, and they're on page three and four of your packet, the proposal doesn't really meet the intent of the recreational facility definition, which also plays in line with tying it to traffic as a recreational facility. And that's where some of the disagreement came from between the applicant and staff, was how do you accurately, you know, quantify what it is that's happening here from a multitude of standpoints? So what we were proposing, you know, again, because of the trip generation, it's going to be different than a recreational facility. It's tournament-based, there's prizes, there's fixed entry fees, not typically associated with standard recreational facilities. So we're proposing to just identify it as an indoor/outdoor sports challenge complex for this application only. And with the monitoring, you know, we can go ahead and gauge where it goes from there.
Excuse me?
Sir, yes.
Maybe this question's for Derek. Does Florida have spot zoning restrictions?
Yes, spot zoning is prohibited. However, Florida also recognizes plan unit development zone. So, you know, and contract zoning is also prohibited, but Florida law also recognizes plan unit development. So to the extent that plan unit developments, you know, highlight a series of uses which are necessarily inconsistent with the remainder, where you have to look is to the comprehensive plan. And if it's found to be in compliance with the comprehensive plan, then it will be upheld as not being spot zoning.
Okay, thank you.
So we have here a copy of the master concept plan. It's also in your packet. One thing to point out is that on the master concept plan, on the right side there is essentially the project summary and all of the development regulations. So your questions about the stormwater, the required parking versus what's proposed, open space, it's all on the master concept plan. So that, you know, we tie the approval to the master concept plan. So that means you have to develop to the regulations proposed on the plan.
Could you point out where the bike paths are, sidewalks?
Sure. So all of the sidewalks on the plan here are going to be in the, I can't really see what the color is with the lights. I think that's like an orangish color that kind of wraps around from the fields here, goes through the building, all the way up this way as well. So that's what's being proposed now as far as new infrastructure. What's also being proposed in the lines of transportation is the additional driveway that comes out to the south and runs into the proposed east-west right-of-way reservation that can connect Racetrack Road all the way to Old 41.
And bike paths?
Bike paths themselves. I don't believe there's any, Sean, is there any specific bike paths? Right, okay. So you have the existing bike paths that are on Racetrack Road that would, you know, once this east-west reservation gets squared away, it would also run the length of that to Old 41.
And the sidewalk along Benita Beach Road?
Is existing. It's on the other side of the landscape buffer, and it runs the full length.
Unless they're already, right?
Yes, it is.
Mike, where you see there's an existing heritage tree to be preserved just east of the par-three hole. Got your yellow pointer? Down, down, up, 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 up. The tree, right there. So the parking that's around that, is that in existence?
The parking that is around that, I believe it is already constructed up to this point here, up to this drive aisle here.
So where's the new parking? Is it at the three and four to the south of where we were just pointing?
Yeah, it's going to be this row here and along the building, all the additional handicap spaces.
Handicap spots. So the stuff that's to the north of what we're just talking about is already there?
Correct.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So moving on to a little zoomed-in area of the fields. And this goes back to, you know, there's a big que... One of the questions that staff asked, and two of its requests for additional information had to do with the orientation of the golf hole. We knew that was going to come up, so we wanted to go ahead and ask those questions as well. And I think one of the things to keep in mind goes back to one of the intents of the Benita Beach Road overlay, which is to foster additional interconnectivity and provide additional modes of transportation other than having to necessarily travel on Benita Beach Road. And one of the proposed connection points, which you can see more clearly from here, runs the length of the existing driveway off of Racetrack Road. And all this is constructed already there. And then from this point, it's proposed to go through and carry on to whatever ends up being developed here on the site. And they're proposing a future interconnect right there on the other side of the building. You can see it right here. It's in between that dash line there is the proposed future interconnect that would go through. So if you flip the building to do that, you run the risk of potentially having a misalignment with the existing driveway. And you would also end up, you know, scrunching the usability of any potential courts or activities that you could potentially put here. And with the golf hole, I think the thing that, to keep in mind that was described earlier on is with the premium on safety and being able to make sure that everything is closely monitored, you know, you essentially have the tee box right next to the building. So it's very, you know, tied right there to where you check in, where you get vetted, where you pay your fixed entry fee. You go through all these checkpoints, so to speak, before you go ahead and get your one shot. And to do that, putting it on the other side of an interconnect further away where you might have additional traffic coming right here, I think it defeats the purpose of being able to closely monitor the golf hole as a facility. The other thing to keep in mind is, as they had said at its widest point, the golf hole is approximately 95 feet. So I think there's a little bit of a misnomer of this potentially trying to be a driving range, which it is not. You know, it's not a top golf. If it was a top golf, you know, like the one they built in Fort Myers, where you have a width of over 200 feet, 200-plus yards deep, and they have a net that's 175 feet high. But that's because you're trying to long drive. You're trying to hit it as hard as you possibly can. With this being, you know, essentially a stunted facility, both in width and depth, the heights of the proposed netting are adjusted to accommodate for that. And I would also keep in mind that based on the zoomed-in plan that you see here, you're going to have the existing netting around the golf target, additional open area, another fence, a 15-foot-wide landscape buffer, then the sidewalk, then Benita Beach Road. So I wanted to make sure that that was clear as well. With regard to the deviations, as Paula said, one deviation was already approved as part of the 2019 ordinance. There's no request to tinker with that. There is a request to add three more deviations specific to this project, and they have to do with the fencing material, the fencing height, and the additional parking. So with deviation two, the Benita Beach Road overlay does prohibit chain-link fencing. Largely, when you look at that, the intent is to prohibit chain-link project perimeter fencing as a whole. This isn't intended to be a perimeter fence. It's intended to be a safety fence for one of the courts, in this case, the baseball field. And you can actually see when I go back here where it's going to be outlined right here, so it's not on the perimeter of the project. And, you know, one of the applicant's justification for that was that, you know, it's a fence that's common to baseball fields, it's durable, it's not visible from Benita Beach Road. Staff does agree with that. However, at some point, it might be visible from that future east-west interconnect. So without wanting to compromise safety, but also understand the aesthetic components that go along with the Benita Beach Road overlay, staff proposed a condition that if you are going to utilize this fencing, you're not going to get that unfinished chain-link metal look. It has to be coated either green or black when you come in for the approval and the permits for it, and they agreed to that. With deviation three, that has to do with the fence height and the maximum fence height being six feet in the LDC. And again, that's largely for project perimeter fencing. The request that they are proposing would be 40 feet around the golf hole, 20 feet around the football field, and 12 feet around the baseball field. And the justification that was provided was that it's necessary for protection. Only certain portions of the higher fences would be visible from Benita Beach Road. But to that end, they are providing the enhanced landscape buffer along Benita Beach Road. And staff agrees that the fencing is necessary for adequate safety provisions and that the heights have been adjusted based on the size of the proposed facilities. If the facilities were larger, staff would want a higher fence. But since they're, you know, stunted in growth in terms of width or depth or both in certain cases, we feel that the fence aligns properly with what you would typically see on athletic fields of that size. For deviation four, this goes back to the parking. The Benita Beach Road corridor tries to limit the amount of parking or over-parking that can be provided on a site. But again, we have a little bit of a question mark here as far as what the ultimate trip generation is going to end up being, which is why we have the monitoring condition in place. So they're requesting to go a little bit above that 15% minimum for 20%. And since there is no precedent for the trip generation in the ITE manual and because this is a rather unique facility, you know, as you heard before, it'd be the first one in the state of its kind. We're okay with this deviation because we tie it to the traffic monitoring condition. And we also tie it to if you do end up providing too much, if it is overparked, that it would need to be converted back to open space or landscaping. And that would be done after the staff analysis of the traffic monitoring. The initial monitoring period is slated for one year.
One year from the actual operation?
Yes, correct, correct.
For my opinion, for whatever it's worth, the explosive growth that we're seeing here, you're going to need these additional parking spaces.
I agree.
Probably.
Just my opinion.
That could be very likely.
I think your monitoring is going to show that.
And I agree. And I also think because the monitoring isn't just for the specific use, it's for the site as a whole. So it also includes the two card room entrances and the proposed driveway on the south to get a better idea of the site as a whole for what's there now, the trip generation that's provided.
That's a very good idea.
With the comprehensive plan, we'll just go ahead and go over that briefly. We didn't see any conflicts with the comprehensive plan. You do see the analysis for the future land use on page eight and nine of your packet. The future land use is general commercial. It's a commercial use that's being proposed, no issues there. You have the Benita Beach Road corridor objective, which is trying to promote an interconnected mix of uses, make them walkable, bikable, a pleasing streetscape. It's definitely a unique use. And, you know, there are going to be various proposed interconnections that would be involved as part of this project, especially two additional points of interconnectivity. They are providing the required sidewalk infrastructure. They are going to be providing the required bike infrastructure. They are providing bike racks on site. So we do feel that they are meeting the intent of that particular objective of the comp plan. The remaining analysis, what I did was I attached the staff report and the attachment from the 2019 case, which looked at the site as a whole. Didn't seem necessary to reinvent the wheel since this is a four-acre piece of an overall 88-plus acre remaining piece. So a lot of the analysis that was done in 2019 still holds true for the site. So that's why you have that as one of your backups as well for reference. But staff did review it for any additional conflicts and did not see any. With regards to traffic, you know, this has come up several times. This was reviewed by the Lee County Department of Transportation as well as the city's Public Works Department and the Community Development Traffic Engineer. And again, since we couldn't necessarily agree on an appropriate trip generation rate, we have that monitoring condition that's being proposed to reflect generation for both the card room and the sports challenge site together. And, you know, as we said, going along with the traffic, they are providing the required sidewalks and pedestrian connectivity points, bike racks, and the future interconnect that you see here on the picture. This is on the master concept plan as the potential future interconnection point here, which again, lines up with the southern driveway coming off of Racetrack Road. And getting back to that potential right-of-way reservation, you know, like I said, the original zoning ordinance of 2019 required that reservation to be done as part of Phase Two. Since there's still some, you know, a bit unsure of what ultimately Phase Two is going to be with the remaining, you know, 80-plus acres of the property, we thought it was appropriate to get at least a conceptual alignment going now. And when they come in for their development order permits, they're going to be required to provide a temporary signage and striping plan so that this proposed interconnect can be used now. So we can get a sense now during the study period how it functions. The final alignment, though, like Paula said, you know, is not intended to come at this stage. There is a project development and environmental study. We call it a PD and E study that's being undertaken right now by Lee County. As you know, Lee County conveys ownership over Benita Beach Road. And they are going forward with the study. I think it's slated to start sometime in the spring with regards to any potential improvements that might be needed to the Benita Beach Road right-of-way, whether that means additional connectivity points, additional traffic calming devices, signalizations, all those types of things. So it makes sense that the final delineation of this proposed east-west interconnect would come in concert with that larger PD and E study for the roadway network. So we do have it tied to that condition as well. So we do have it tied to that condition as well. With regards to environmental, there are no protected species or natural resources observed on site. The landscaping is going to consist largely of native plantings with a few tropical palm accents. They are providing a betterment plan, especially along Bonita Beach Road, and that is Exhibit C in your packet, where they are required to provide at least nine trees and 119 shrubs. They're going to provide 11 trees and 165 shrubs. So definitely meets the definition of being better from the landscape perspective. With regard to the stormwater, the property drains to the north. There there is an existing system within the Bonita Beach Road right-of-way that collects the stormwater and carries it to its ultimate outfall point to the Imperial River. There is an existing drainage plan that was approved as part of Phase One for the card room. What they would do is they would go in and modify that approval for this specific project so that it can be accommodated as part of the stormwater permit. And there is an existing vegetative swell that's on site right now that does convey a certain volume of water. And what they are proposing is to remove that vegetative swell so that they can construct their courts, but to provide a filter marsh that would be able to hold an equivalent capacity to that existing vegetative swell. So and all the outfall structures that are on Bonita Beach Road are slated to remain. That's going to be its main outfall point to carry water to the Imperial River. The drainage plan was reviewed by the senior staff engineer for the city, and they did not see any conflicts between the proposal and the land development code requirements. So we come to the plan development criteria, which is pages 11 and 12 of your of your packet. You know, demonstrating compliance with the with the Bonita Plan, the LDC, and other applicable codes, we feel that it meets a checkmark and that it successfully demonstrates those components. Meets or exceeds performance and location standards. We we feel that, given the uniqueness of the proposed facility, that it does do a good job of meeting the intent of those standards. With regards to affordable housing, it's that's not one of the attributes of this particular plan, so it's not applicable. We do believe it's compatible with existing and planned uses. Again, it's a it's a commercial plan development that's meant to be incubated for commercial uses, is surrounded by commercial development. It's in a commercial future land use category. We didn't see any conflicts there. With regards to the infrastructure, water soar, not a problem. With regards to traffic, the applicant did make a very valid case for Phase One of Card Room as far as its ability to convey less traffic to the site than what was there previously. There is a little bit of an unknown with this, but since they agreed to the monitoring condition, we're okay with it. There are no adverse effects to environmentally critical areas because there are no environmentally critical areas within this particular phase. Yes, sir?
Is a wetlands mitigation permit required here?
There aren't any wetlands observed on site, so a mitigation permit wouldn't be required. If there was a designated wetland on site, they would be required to mitigate.
I thought I thought there were wetlands on the site.
No, I don't. We have our environmentalist here who reviewed it, but I don't believe there are any wetlands on site. There's some vegetation in that in that swell, but it doesn't constitute a wetland.
Wait just a second. I, you know, I can't. The table on page 186 of 315 says that other surface waters, 0.47 acres, other surface waters, 0.73 acres. Other surface waters, surface waters is not a wetland?
Derek, I was not sworn in. I don't know if I need.
Oh, my God.
Sorry, I was tired.
If anyone else hasn't sworn in, now's your time. You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
All right. Now we're all safe.
Yes, you're correct. Other surface waters are not wetlands, but they may be reviewed by the Water Management District still because typically they they do convey water used for retention. And so that overall, it's it's the overall process of of retention and stormwater management that that's looked at specifically instead of wetland value. And this was not a create, it's not a natural wetland area it was created, and it's filled in with vegetation. And most of it is is not high-quality vegetation as it is. So, yeah, it's it's not a jurisdictional wetland.
Okay. Thank you.
With regards to public facilities, they are available to the site, and they will be able to service the proposed use. And the proposed uses, we do feel are appropriate at the location. It's a unique site into of itself. And that, you know, we we do believe that the uses would be appropriate for what they are proposing. And we do believe that the additional conditions the staff have provided will provide safeguards for the health, safety, and welfare of the general public and that they are reasonably related to the request. And that the purpose of the deviations are also designed to promote the health, safety, and welfare of the general public. So with that in mind, staff does recommend approval of the proposed request to amend ordinance 1902 to create a Phase One A for this specific style of use for an indoor-outdoor sports challenge facility with the ancillary consumption on premises and the bar cocktail lounge. So with that, we do have certain conditions that we wanted to mon- go ahead and amend for ordinance 1902. Condition one, we'd be adding the new master concept plan, which is Exhibit B in your packet. Condition two would be to modify the schedule of uses to now include a Phase One A. Condition three would be to promote the same development regulations as Phase One. They aren't proposing a different development standard than what's on site already. They'd be meeting the same development standard as what's on site. Conditions four through eight G remain unchanged. Condition eight H has to do with the alignment and where it was originally required to be done as part of Phase Two. The amendment, the amended language now proposes for it to be done as part of this particular phase, Phase One A. And with condition eight I, there is no change. Condition eight J is the monitoring condition, where it lays out the parameters for the traffic monitoring to include all of the access points to this particular site and with the provision that if we do determine at the end of the monitoring period if the if there's too much parking, that they would need to remove it. Condition eight K, no change. Condition nine is the hours of operation that were proposed by the applicant. Condition 10 requires a temporary signage and striping plan for that proposed east-west connector road so that it can be included as part of the study. And condition 11 is for the cyclone fencing specifically around the baseball field to go ahead and assure that we're not going to get that unfinished metal look and that it would be coated either green or black. So with that, if you have any questions or comments for staff, I have my review team here. We're happy to answer anything you have.
Excuse me, just all these conditions have been approved by the applicant, accepted by the applicant.
They agreed.
Correct? Thank you.
Night lighting. But what are the restraints on the night lighting, particularly next to Bonita Beach Road?
Sure. So they're not proposing any deviations or requesting any modifications to the existing lighting standards. So at time of development order, they'll be required to provide a photometric plan that shows the the lumens, and they'll have to demonstrate that there's not going to be any bleed over onto adjacent properties or into adjacent right-of-ways that they don't have control of. So that's that's the way it will be reviewed. It'll be reviewed by the book. They're not requesting any deviations or special treatment for lighting. So shielded, dark skies, compliant, the whole deal.
Is it possible to add a condition that from day one of operation, the landscaping between Bonita Beach Road and this particular use is at three years development? In other words, I personally don't want to have to wait three years to not be able to see the netting 40 feet high.
There's there's nothing preventing the condition from being altered to include language like that. How feasible it is in terms of the availability of product that size at time of planting, I can't say. So I wouldn't know if we're going to be back here, you know, a year from now to to redo that condition again to put it back to the way it was. It's something we can definitely look at.
If you would, please.
Sure.
Anything else?
Yes, sir. Mike, the the shape of Phase One.
Yes.
Sorry, shape of Phase One A, what we're talking about here.
Yes, sir.
Is this dictated because we didn't want to spill into Phase Two?
Well, in the original MCP that was approved, everything other than card room was considered Phase Two. So part of the request is to take this little sliver to make it Phase One A for this specific use. So they're they're trying to take no more than what they feel they need to have a successful product and allow the remaining 84 acres to be developed in accordance with whatever Phase Two ultimately ends up being. They'll have to come back for another amendment when they ultimately do get to quote-unquote Phase Two for the development.
So Phase One A reduces the acreage of Phase Two?
It does, by four acres, correct?
As originally considered.
Yes, from 88 acres to 84, correct?
Okay. Let's find a slide where you can show me the proposed future interconnection. Please.
Sure.
A bigger one than that. So the proposed future interconnection is, there's a little traffic island in it, it looks like. In in this in this view, it's the furthest down part of.
Yes, you're talking about the little.
Right there.
Yep.
So that's a proposed future interconnection.
Right here, yes.
It's going to cross the new retain- water retention area. And go where?
Well, to to the next adjacent development whenever it comes in. That's the intent of a grid network, and that's the intent of the Bonita Beach Road corridor interconnectivity standards is to provide these additional interconnects where you don't necessarily have to travel on the main roadway to get to the next phase of the site. You're able to do it internal to the site itself. So this, obviously, you know, it's 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 a potential future interconnection. Depending on what comes in next, it might not be right next to this specific project. It might be somewhere else on the site. But we wanted to assure that when something does come in on this potential area, that the interconnect is available. And it does align directly with the existing driveway on Racetrack Road, so it's a nice straight shot.
So it's not intended to connect to Old 41? It's just to whatever's happening in Phase Two? And then we'll worry about Phase Two connecting?
For Old 41 later on. For this one, yes. But for the other one, let me get to the other one. There's another potential connection point to the south, which is here. So you have the Phase One A, which is the area we're talking about. And then to the south outlined here is the right-of-way reservation that they were originally required to provide as part of Phase Two, which connects Racetrack Road to Old 41. And what we're saying is because of this particular development and the monitoring conditions and the fact that there's an existing PD and E study that's about ready to happen to discuss potential modifications to the Bonita Beach Road network system, we felt it was appropriate to require it now.
So sorry, I should have started with full disclosure. I was on site this morning on the way driving here. And this corner cutoff, what you got labeled two there. I mean, that seems to be used fairly regularly by folks traveling north on Old 41 that are going to want to go east on Bonita.
Sure.
And the other way around. Bonita to, what is that, South 41? Going south on Old 41?
Yep.
So this interconnect concern that I have isn't going to have any change on that? Part of the PD and E, PD and E stands for?
Project Development and Environment.
So is it intended in the future that this be made more of a permanent sort of way to cut that corner off by traffic?
Yes. Yes, th- this is an interconnect that Public Works is very interested in.
When you were talking about you've been studying this intersection of Bonita Beach Road, this is one of the ways to alleviate traffic at that light?
Yes, one of the things that our Public Works Department is making sure that the the firm that was chosen to to do the PD and E study by Lee County, them being made aware of this potential interconnect here to help the network.
All right. And my other concern, and we've addressed it some here, find me a slide that looks like that, please. There you go. Thank you. Do we have any studies of how close that existing parking lot has come to reaching capacity for current use of the card room? In other words, I'm looking at this going, this is an awful lot of pavement, and we're adding to it. And this particular slide doesn't show all of the pavement that's to the south, which is where the racetrack was and the the pile is now and all the parking of the carnival, food trucks and rides and campers. I'm concerned about at, and I, sorry, Stuart and Sean and Laura, they taught me well before I ever joined this board. I'm concerned about adding more pavement to a place that's already overpaved, where we've got stormwater issues. We're having to create new retention areas. So it assuages my fears of, let's go back. How how used is this parking lot? And that might be a Mr. Savin question?
Yeah, it's it's pretty heavily used if you want to.
Do y'all fill it up?
Yeah, on on weekends, yes. Pretty close to capacity on Saturdays and Sundays between Thanksgiving and Easter.
And we're adding 20 spaces, 30 spaces? Your proposal adds 30 spaces?
Paula, can you show them again where the spaces are at?
Yes, where three and four is, right there.
Right, so I don't have the exact count in front of me, but yes, it's about 20 or 30 spaces here, again, to help service the new building. And all this parking, this parking is being utilized by the card room, the restaurant, the bar will be utilized by the bar and this facility as well, which is in a good location to to serve those new users.
So we have an existing water management area to the south of the main parking lot, right there. The parking that is to the north of that water management area, is that new? Or is that there now?
That is existing.
And that's a dry retention pond water management area?
Dry retention.
Yes.
During rainy season, are you seeing it ever used, ever get anything in it?
The stormwater has been designed for the this development.
Mr. Savin?
Yes, there's been a tremendous amount of water.
Yeah, okay. So it does it does get used. There is water runoff going into it.
Do you have, Mr. Gambrell, a specific objection?
No, sir, just, yes, not an objection, just getting concerned about additional stormwater runoff because we're paving and not getting.
Salt, did you say saltwater?
Stormwater.
Stormwater.
Rainwater. What was the word you used? Percolate into the ground, permeate into the ground?
That's why I asked that question. Excuse me, Gary, with respect to the overall project, does it comply with the current code or ordinance as relative to stormwater managed space, open space? And the response, I believe, from Mike was, yes, it does. So I think we're kind of beating a dead horse here theoretically. And I would like to, I'm just simply saying that it's, that that is a concern we all have, especially anybody who's been living here for the last several years. And I think that the answer was pretty straightforward, that yes, it does comply with the current ordinance. So we're not here to write an ordinance. I just simply say, let's, can we move on on this? Sorry, I just feel that that question has been answered.
I appreciate it, Ben. I just want to get clear on it.
Okay, don't, we also have to have it opened up for public comment.
Yes.
And I just had, if I could, one response to the question about the landscaping. It is very difficult to get trees and shrubs that are at that higher height. It's very difficult to actually purchase them. And it also affects the survivability of the the trees and shrubs. They survive much better if they are installed at the.
They survive much better if they are installed at the, the smaller height. This is Florida, things do grow very quickly, maybe three years, maybe two years, that, that landscaping will grow very quickly.
Anything else?
Public comment, right? Public comment?
Yes. Public comment, if any, please.
Thank you.
Good morning, for the record, my name is Jim Magnus. We own the property directly to the west of the Dog Track, on the east side of Old Forty-One. We also own the property on the southwest corner of Benita Beach Road and Old Forty-One. We were, uh, we received the notices, I've been to both of the neighborhood meetings that were presented by the Dog Track. We believe this is a great project, and I would like to see the project be approved.
Thank you very much, sir. Anything else? Mr. Mike?
Before you vote, I would like a, a clarification for, for staff's purposes with regards to Board Member Gallaway's recommendation to alter or amend the condition with regards to landscaping that would take, uh, a board vote to go ahead and do that. So, I did want to throw that out there in case that was still on the table or not.
Do you want to change the condition of landscaping?
Well, I, I, Chairman, I would recommend if you're, if there's no more public comment and there's no rebuttal from the applicant, I would just, whoever makes the motion wishes to add that as a condition, that would just be the cleanest way to do it, rather than adding the conditions before you approve.
Sure.
I, I don't, I don't think...
I'll make the motion to, to approve the sports challenge, commercial plan development, PD Twenty-One dash eight-two, eight-nine-eight dash BOS with the conditions as represented by staff and also a zoning board member, Campbell.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
All, you want the roll call or...
Anyone opposed? Motion carried. That is, you've been approved.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask for a recess just for...
That's what I was going to suggest, please, you...
Thank you.
Yeah, let, let's take ten to fifteen minutes.
And ten minutes, I think.
Ten minutes, thank you. Thank you very much. Second item is case named Causeway Commerce Sales Center Special Exemption. A special exemption request at twenty-eight-two-eighty Old Forty-One Road, Unit M dash five, to allow a vehicle and equipment dealer group one use within the historic zone of the Benita Beach Road Corridor Overlay. Public comment will be held after the public hearing, and, uh, let's, ah, well, we're going to hear from the staff first.
I will actually just do a brief introduction, Mary Zizo for the record. This was in the same complex that we analyzed last month, the Causeway Commerce Complex, just three units down. This request is for an indoor car dealership, for high-end cars, a sales room by appointment only, solely indoors. So, I'll go ahead and let the applicant present, but staff does recommend approval, and the applicant does agree with the conditions we set forth.
And you will come back?
I will come back.
Thank you. Let us hear from the applicant. Mr. Rooney, have you sworn?
I, I believe the gentleman was, sworn everyone in earlier.
Yes, thank you, uh, thank you for listening, and, um, we hope this is pretty easy. My name is Joe McCaris, McCaris Planning and Design, located here on Benita Beach Road. And what you have here is a Unit M-five of the Causeway Commerce Park. And what we're requesting is an indoor, nothing outside, auto and vehicle sales online, no outside, um, display. It's all internal, it's all high-end vehicles, and, um, we have an access at the rear of the, um, unit with a garage door. There will be no changes to the front of the building, um, except for a new sign. And that's really it, and we agree with all staff recommendations. So, do you have questions?
I, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
One of the conditions for granting a special exemption is that there exists changed or changing conditions that make approval of the request appropriate. Can you please enunciate what you consider the changed or changing conditions?
Changing conditions are, um, the way auto dealerships work these days, a lot of them are online, people buy online. And that's different than having the big sales center with all the cars out front. And this is in line with, keeping with that, is everything is done online, the photos are done online. And if somebody wants to come and purchase, they usually will set up an appointment, this is all appointment-driven. And they will come in, they will, um, look to make sure the car is as advertised, and do a test drive, and then purchase.
So, your justification is that there is, there are certain purchasers who purchase online?
Yes, sir.
That's your...
Yes, with the changing technology, yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir, Mr. ...
If I call up and I say, I want to, I want to see a red Ferrari, do you bring in through the back door my red Ferrari?
No.
Do you have a set, you have a set inventory?
Yeah, they have their own inventory, they're not trading with other dealers. This is all online, if you see what we have at, or they have at this time, then that's the car. You're not bringing in stuff and out stuff. A lot of this is, um, in this instance, is, is some of their personal collection, and just like, you know, boys like to trade cards, this family likes to trade cars, it's a little more expensive, but maybe not. Mickey Rooney or a Babe Ruth card would be very expensive, so...
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Relative to the recommendation of staff, where it gets into hours of appointments, et cetera, pickups and drop-offs, limited to nine AM to four PM, Monday through Saturday. However, in your narrative, it states nine AM to five PM, Monday through Friday, with the ability to have private viewing on the weekend and after hours when needed. So, I'm asking basically, based upon the staff's recommendation, do you accept that meaning that it literally is Monday through Friday, uh, Monday through Saturday, nine AM to four PM?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else for the applicant?
Quick one. Vehicle ignitions are to remain off when entering, exiting, how, how are you getting the cars in and out?
Staff has recommended, like the previous primo, that we put them on casters and roll them in. They, um, again, they're, um, high-end cars, I, I can't say there are Ferraris and Lamborghinis, there are some Porsches and some neat cars, and they don't want to have something happen to them anyways. So, the, the best way to do it at this point that we've decided is to put them on casters, roll them in, and then they can line them up. They're going to have to put them on casters once they get anyways in order to get them to, to stack correctly.
Elaborate on that some more, I lost you on that one.
First, do you know what a caster is?
Yes.
Okay, you put them on all four wheels and you roll them in. You know, the, the building's not enough to turn around, so, they're, once they get in anyways, whether they do it outside or inside, they're going to be, have to be on casters so they can position the cars for display. You want to be able to move them in and move them out without obviously damaging them, so, casters is not an issue.
And this is something you're, you have experience in, putting the cars on casters?
Me? No, they, yes.
They?
Uh, the owners of the, um...
The planning consultant.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
At any one time, how many cars would you consider to be in the showroom? What's the capacity?
I, I think the capacity is like ten or twelve.
Ten or twelve?
Yes, sir. It's a, it's a long bay.
These, these ten or twelve will be there because someone has suggested, has requested to come in and see it?
No, they will be there because the owner wants to sell them, and they're sitting there like in storage until they, they sell. They, they drive the cars, and he owns many cars, he'll drive them in, or not drive them in there, I'm sorry, they'll caster them in, and they're parked, they don't move around, and they advertise them on the internet. And then when somebody wants to view that, to buy it, they will set an appointment, come, look at the car, and make a decision whether they want to drive it or not, and then if they buy it, then we...
If somebody walks by and says, ooh, a nice Porsche, and comes in, they can make an appointment, go home, and then come back?
You, you wouldn't be able to walk by because you're not going to really be able to see inside.
You cannot.
There, the way, if you look at your packet, I'm sure, the, the front of the building is really where the reception area is and lounge, then there is a bathroom, and behind the bathroom is the, is the row of cars. I mean, I'd guess technically if you were at one of the other shops, when I say shops, one of the other units at, um, Causeway, and you, maybe you're at the industry and you walk by or something, and you saw something in there, you could do that, but it's not a typical way of sales. There are none outside display, um, so most, ninety-nine percent of them would be internet sales. Yes, sir.
It's almost like you're a middleman. Sounds like you're repre, you're like, well, I mean, you know, they're like the owner, and then they're, they're dropping the car off at your place there so you can facilitate, you know, showing and, and then...
I think most of these are their own car, but I guess they could, let's say they had a friend that wanted to sell the car, they could roll it in there, advertise it, and then...
Okay.
Yeah.
If I may, for the council, the, the, just the, the way I might consider this is imagine it's a, a private owner with a collection who is, instead of act, asking for, say, a home occupation to, to sell vehicles out of his garage, is choosing to do it in a commercial facility.
In this sense...
And because of the use, which is vehicle sales, he requires a special exception for this zoning category. It just doesn't fit the traditional vehicle sales mark where there's a sea of parking and all that. So, that, I, I know this is a, a very unusual special exception request, I just thought I maybe have that analogy.
Yeah. Thank you.
Any other questions? Let's hear from Mary again, please, the staff.
Hi, good morning, Mary Zizo again, for the record. So, again, this is a special exception request to allow a vehicle and equipment dealer group one use within the historic zone of the Benita Beach Road Corridor Overlay, to allow for a high-end indoor car storage and sales room in Unit M-five. As previously mentioned, we do recommend approval, subject to the conditions outlined in your staff report. Um, I think we're familiar with the location, but it's just west on Old Forty-One from the location we were just talking about at, with the racetrack, within the Causeway Commerce Park. The reason for the special exception, Benita Beach Road does require an, a special exception for the vehicle and equipment dealer group one use, which includes auto and truck dealers, establishments primarily engaged in the retail sale, storage, or leasing of automobiles, small trucks, and vans. Our LDC does define vehicle and equipment dealers to be primarily involved in the retail sale or storage of motor vehicles, trailers, boats, and other similar equipment, incidental servicing and repairs, and the stacking of replacement parts. Of note, with this request, no incidental servicing is requested. Um, so, to show you a little bit with the unit, as discussed in the staff report, this particular unit does have a rear access to allow for the entrance and exit of the vehicles, and then the pedestrians and customers, customers who may be pedestrians that make an appointment, will enter via the front entrance. This is a preliminary floor plan, um, to show that, again, the vehicles will access from the rear, and the customers will enter from the front with a customer service and reception area in the front of the unit. So, the special exception review criteria and analysis are within your staff report, but a few to mention would be, yes, there does, there is a requirement for an existing or a soon-to-be-existing changed circumstance or condition. Car sales have changed. And the Benita Beach Road Corridor does not want those auto-centric uses that are huge lots of pavement. We want walkable areas, and this particular complex was just completed under the Benita Beach Road Corridor Regulation, so it is walkable.
You, you, you agree that the fact that certain automobile sales are made over the internet is an appropriate changed or changing condition to make approval of the request? Don't you think it, do, do you know what was intended when, when they put that, that provision in? Was it demographics, what, 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 was it, uh, physical changes in the location? I, I'm very concerned because I, I just don't see how some sales, um, event could be considered a changed or changing condition?
So, Benita Beach Road did not want, I'm sorry, required a special exception for these particular uses so that you wouldn't have these huge lots of pavement with cars lining the front of the parking lot where you don't have a beautiful aesthetic view from Benita Beach Road. This is not the case or the...
I, I understand that, but, but what has changed? What, what is, the changing conditions or simply some, some sales are made over the internet?
That vehicle sales are not...
Was that the intent of something like this?
The...
Maybe Derek can answer that, I, I don't know the legislative history there.
Well, the, Mr. Chairman, the, the changing condition standard is a generic standard intended to apply to any number of uses that are special exception. So, it's not as though that specific standard was put in place to deal with car dealerships as appropriate. So, you know, one of the, one of the examples that I can give is that, you know, many jurisdictions, including the city, have moved away from auto-centric as a second condition. You know, auto-centric uses like drive-throughs. But then we had COVID and the response to COVID, where now it may be appropriate to consider through a special exception a drive-through that was not something that was planned for in the future because people are not as willing to go into sit-down restaurants or deliveries become...
But that, that's a change in demographic.
That's a change in, well, it's a change in the market, it's not necessarily a change in the demographics, just because you get older or, or we get, there are more young people, doesn't change attitudes.
Seems like I've beaten a dead horse.
Well, Mr. Chairman, probably a little bit of history. So, in a previous job, when the first Benita Beach Road Overlay was being created, it was early '01-ish. At that time, car sales were large lots. Even smaller lots, consisted of several acres, generally had bad balloons, signs, things that weren't considered aesthetically pleasing. There really was not a situation that allowed for a smaller-scale type dealership operation that would be successful. Since that time that the original standard was passed and has basically remained unchanged, the intent, some of the, the, it's been tweaked around the edges, but the intent of it has not changed. Since that time, it is now possible to have a dealership that would go into a place that would normally have a small retail operation and still be financially feasible, that was not the case before. So, that is the change. So, what we're seeing now is, is, at first, I would say back in, in two thousand nine, two thousand ten, you had opportunities where, where somebody would come in and say, I'm doing an internet sales. And they probably advertised on the internet, but most of the sales were still walk-in customers. And, and that has evolved now to where it's not uncommon to buy cars online. I bought my car online, I had to fly to go get it, couldn't find one that had a thing I wanted here. So, the idea of, of reducing that walk-in traffic, the idea of having that change in aesthetics, which is probably one of the biggest parts, where you don't have a lot of cars sitting out along the right-of-way. And when you drive by this particular facility, if it's approved, you won't know whether it's, it's a doctor's office or whether they're selling cars, because there'll be no difference in that appearance. So, because of that change and because of that, uh, shift in how business is done, that has changed a lot of the conditions that, uh, the city wanted to regulate when it first came up with the standard. If we were talking about a situation where these cars were going to be stored out in the parking lot, or if we were talking about a situation where there'd be balloons and, and clowns and the flatable...
But you're talking, excuse me, you're talking aesthetics, I, I'm still...
Which was the entire reason of creating the Benita Beach Road Overlay.
Well, all right. I'm just not persuaded that there exists changed or changing conditions. I'm sorry.
Oh, and that's fine.
Just not, that's me. Please, let's proceed.
Okay, a few other points to mention, the testimony of the public. The applicant did hold their required neighborhood meetings. Two people showed up and had no objections to the first meeting, and nobody showed up for the second meeting. We did send out courtesy notices and did not receive any public input. The request does comply with the industrial future land use of the complex. There are many contractor uses, there are many, we just approved that car detailing facility, so you have a mix of commercial and light industrial uses within the complex, and that does comply there. The, there are adequate public facilities, of course, and like I mentioned, the uses surrounding the particular unit would not be impacted by this request. We made sure within the conditions that they would be using the casters and that the vehicles would only be entering from the rear so that there are no concerns of fumes, noise, and odors for the surrounding units. Staff does recommend approval subject to those conditions outlined. We did say 9 to 4 Monday through Saturday for the conditions based on approval of the applicant, so that a traffic impact analysis was not required, they're avoiding all peak hour traffic. As mentioned, all vehicles will be entirely within the unit, no outdoor sales are permitted. The casters will be required, and all doors will be required to be closed at all times, unless actively entering or exiting. Do we have any other questions at this time, for myself or the applicant?
No further questions?
No.
I guess now is time for public comment. We have any public comment? No public comment? Okay, then I can, I will entertain a motion to approve the special exemption as outlined by the staff.
So move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I am opposed. And the reason I'm opposed is because I am not convinced that the legislature, when they drew this requirement that a, there had to be a change in condition, was really intended or even contemplated change in the type of way cars would be. So I thought it, I think they meant demographic change or physical change in the location. That's just me. And unless I can get a clarification on the legislative intent, I will continue to vote the same way. Thank you. Now, before we adjourn, Mr., Dr. Hirschenson had some comments he wanted to make.
Yeah, I do, and I wanted to wait till the very end. Perhaps I have alluded to this in the past. I've been on the zoning board long enough to see that many times the applicant will seek a deviation, and, you know, each project is unique unto itself. So I'd like to ask Derek, the city attorney, Rooney, when a deviation is requested and then justifies it, and staff does agree, and subsequently the zoning board does, and one cannot predict what the council will do, but let's assume that they get approved. And I'm wondering that even though each deviation is unique to a particular project or application development, whatever it is, and yet, sometimes I'm in conflict with the LDC, which is ordinances already established, and yet we constantly kind of seem to deviate from those ordinances. Now, I know there's a good basis legally to respond to that, and that's what I'm really asking. Help me understand, when does a deviation, what are the extremes, or I guess, when a deviation perhaps is not going to be granted, but yet eventually, you know, anybody, city council, anybody could change that? So could you help me understand that a little bit?
Yeah, let me, let me start with where land use and zoning have moved to from where they were. A hundred years ago, you had what's known as Euclidean zoning, very strict, this is a commercial district, this is an industrial district, this is a residential district. We have seen with the development of planned unit developments in the 1970s, a move towards more of a mix of uses that's fairly common now, but also less rigid designs. So the Land Development Code lays out the technical standards, and the zoning atlas tells you, you know, this is a commercial use, and then you go to the Land Development Code and you said, your setback is this, your footprint is this, your required open space is this. And as we've moved towards the planned unit developments, both, it's encouraged both at the city level in some of the overlays and areas of special concern to do two things. And the first part is the uses themselves. Now, you can have, you can absolutely have a commercial planned development, like we had the first hearing today, that has no mix of uses, it's strictly commercial, but something about the uses that they're asking for, they're asking for uses that are in other districts, or they're asking for special design standards, or possibly to avoid several special exceptions, asking for conditional uses that would otherwise not be allowed. And so when the zoning board is sitting as the reviewer of a planned unit development in the vein of the uses, you're looking at the uses, seeing if they're appropriate, making sure they're conditioned appropriately so that there's not impacts on other uses, and whether or not a PUD is justified versus a straight zoning district in which you have fairly rigid standards. When you look at the deviations, sometimes people will enter into a PUD strictly for the deviations, and the deviations are some change in those generally technical and numerical standards in the land development regulation, which are designed in almost all instances to address every type of use on a standard scale, stormwater, height, fencing, landscaping. They don't contemplate the use, they don't contemplate the neighbors, they don't contemplate anything unique. So the deviations will often, sometimes, as you saw with the first item today, the deviation will not be to go below a standard, it'll go to be above a standard. And then, when you are reviewing, you have two criteria under the code that I recall, Jackie will correct me if I'm wrong. One is to determine whether or not the deviation furthers the goal of the planned unit development. So if you are moving towards a, if, let's say there was a standard in the overlay that said we want PUDs that have uses that you can't determine from the street, such as the architectural standards, and we want to see a car dealership that's inside instead of outside, because we want to address the frontage along Benita Beach Road. Well, if the deviation is to allow a larger building footprint so you can put the cars inside instead of have sea of parking, well, that deviation would further the intent of the planned unit development. And then the second standard would be whether or not the deviation furthers general health, safety, and welfare concern. So, for instance, we had questions about stormwater earlier today. Now, stormwater, if you were asking for a deviation from stormwater either above or below, then you'd have to analyze that deviation with respect to whether it furthers those goals or has some kind of negative impact. But on the other side, you may have a deviation where they say, well, I want to increase the amount of parking and surface area, it's appropriate to ask, is the stormwater being addressed in that process? Because you have, by increasing that amount, you've impacted other areas of health, safety, and welfare that need to be addressed. I hope that helps to understand it.
Yes, it does. I can comprehend that. However, I just want to say this, I'm sure there'll be cases coming before, and I don't want to prolong this, I think it's important to ask though, that there will be cases at some point in time, a planned development, residential development perhaps, and then you have the setbacks, you have areas in the code, ordinances that talk about certain setbacks and so forth. So deviations of that type, can they also be granted?
Sure.
Okay.
So, and I'm going to give you the example of a deviation that is not, if we had, let's say we had a zoning district, a residential zoning district, and because of the conditions on that, in that piece of land, whether maybe there's a water course passing through it, or maybe there's unique habitat that needs to be addressed, and I'm a developer and I intend to build single-family homes, and rather than, or maybe even at the request of the neighborhood or the staff, rather than just bulldozing and doing everything I can to meet the checklist of items in the Land Development Code, I have essentially three options. I can take my residentially-zoned property and ask for a planned unit development in which I ask for the same uses I already had, but a set of deviations from the standards of setbacks, maybe stormwater, other issues, so that I can preserve this particular area either at the request of adjoining neighbors, or because it has unique properties, or there's some kind of hardship I can't get around under the standard zoning code that would not allow me to develop it. Alternatively, I can do a development agreement under the city's code, which does the same thing, except that instead of rezoning, the standards are set by the council almost in a contract. And then the third option is to go with my straight zoning and request a variance. And then the variance has a set of criteria similar to the ones that the chairman raised earlier, says, oh, has there been unique and underlying circumstances that require this change? And you would go through that process. So what the deviation is essentially, is a relief valve to allow you to accomplish things that are otherwise allowed under the code, but may require some more flexibility with respect to the standard rules. It's one tool in the toolbox.
What you've said is basically the changing conditions of whatever the staff deems it to be. It's ethereal. I mean, there are no hard and fast rules, there are no legislative history. What is a changing condition? What did they intend? What you said is whatever.
Well, well, you know, Chairman Horacio, he's being clever, but the truth is, on this issue is legislative intent should not be, should not be generally a consideration of interpreting codes when the language is clear.
Not at all. The language is not.
Well, I mean, the language, if you find.
This is a good law school argument, okay? Let's leave it. Anything else? Anything else? Meeting is adjourned.